So you're live.
Yeah.
Bring it together.
She's never changed her office. Her first ten days she was like, you know what I knew?
We said, oh, well, it's like.
Because she's coming out of an egg.
Or into a girl who's in the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, she didn't correct. But she had to say her name for herself. It's true. I made more than that.
I read the page on the first.
Yeah, we didn't write the campaign for Cameron. To a certain degree, right?
I mean, I wait for a second, then after all the POs have inspiration days.
Are any of those there?
Yes. I said, uh, we have to sell our drugs. We're going to do.
That's just what we have.
All right. It's like, they're starting to think this is not easy. Oh, yeah. Here's the.
The condition of.
Oh, my.
Of Facebook again.
Yeah, I think our contract is that's where it's.
I need to. There's no more than that, just sleep or so. I haven't got any pump, but.
Right. I think we got a two shit. I find it just.
Maybe a little.
Two years.
And you sell.
Obviously, I don't think. So they have many. So I can be whatever creative stuff you ever listen to. For the first time ever, and then they don't have.
Yeah, right. It's a little.
But I wasn't.
Right. Generally, I'm trying to stop it. But it's like, yeah, I'm sorry. It's a cross of course.
Yes. Very nice.
But, um, but yeah, we want to remember.
He just. Yeah. He doesn't make cheese work.
No, that's insane.
Right. I wish you had. All the way. Okay. I'm gonna try and watch. Check out the policy. Actually, actually, that's. I was. But we're not very direct. You know, twice. Big cheese. I don't know. You're sending triple price. And it's market. You see why you want to. But you don't. Right. And it's. It's probably. It's really. It's only a. Well, if you. Can you get some?
So. Our license is fire. Where your approach should have been approved. It has to be through. They'll. Well, that's. It has to be.
Right. Brian, you did a hell of a job on the first store. I think the rose.
This is a video on my.
That's right.
Yeah, you did that. You did it in our.
I did it in our. Yeah.
I went down. Take a place. Make sure you're.
I left. I was. I'm. I'm. How many? How many? How many are you gonna get this year? I put one over there. I just.
You put us too close.
Did I? What are you? I'm gonna have.
Probably waiting for.
I just. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thanks. He does a good job. The UPS guy said that. It's one of the best. Right.
Great.
Who's Jeremy by John's attendance?
Mike is.
No, no. I said.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah.
All right. Can we call the meeting board?
Does everybody know everybody here? Jeremiah, I think you know everybody, right?
Yeah.
Right. I know you know everybody. Ray, you know everybody. Right? Okay. So I don't think we have to do any introductions. First thing on the genitonic is the Jeremiah Vernon Liquor License. Vernon, Vernon, Van De Farm. So I guess, Jeremiah, do you want to get up and let us know what's going on?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want me to say that? You don't have to say it, but we can hear it.
So, uh, we're trying to get a liquor license to sell beer in line. You know, in the, in the bottom of our store.
Okay.
So no, with a container, just so. Like, we sell, you know, chicken, beef, pork, salad, et cetera. Grocery shop, you can get bottled beer, bottled wine.
Okay. So I noticed this says combination beverage, wine, tobacco. So.
Well, so I. All I do is call the state and say, what's the process? And they said, come to the planning board. And I guess the state called the town.
Okay.
Which I didn't. Anyway, so all I know is that I told the state I wanted to get beer in line. I said, first we gotta do is get to town and say yes. And then the state comes out and goes to your place and says, you know, you have five food categories. They do their licensure. So I'm gonna try to do beer in line. And yeah, I'm not sure what the state.
Okay.
Did after that.
Okay. So this isn't for events up there. You're not gonna be.
All of our events right now are BYOB.
BYOBs.
Yeah. And this is just like, we don't do events in winter or anything. I'm just trying to sell beer in line.
Okay.
Like we sell groceries.
All right. Any questions from the board?
Yeah. So our current zoning does not allow retail in this zone, correct? And there's no special exceptions for that? Is my understanding?
No, he, he, he has, you can operate a retail stand so long as thirty-five percent of the product that is sold there is grown on the property. So, I mean, then when, you know, I had to go through this and we talked about it was, I think we said periodically, we need to belong to them to make sure that. And, and, you know, when I looked into it, you know, they said, you go to the Department of Agriculture and somebody will come check, will check their records. But it is thirty-five percent. And, and they're pretty specific about that has to be grown on that property.
Mm-hmm.
Because the, the intent of it was to, you know, allow for, to create open space and to support. So. You know, I, I, you know, following this closely, I saw numerous situations where it wasn't met. You know, there's a huge lawsuit, I think, up in Marlborough, Gilminton, where it, it turned into like a grocery store.
Mm-hmm.
And it was no longer a farm stand.
Right.
So I guess with my experience, that's what I would question. Are they meeting that thirty-five percent requirement?
Well, it would have to be thirty-five percent at the minimum because if I'm, if I'm correct, the state liquor commission requires at least three thousand dollars worth of food, food stock.
Mm-hmm.
Available. Um, not counting the liquor and the wine that's gonna be, and tobacco that's gonna be sold. So we're talking thirty-five percent threshold work. That's a pretty steep requirement.
The other part that can be sometimes tricky and it was discussed at length previously was, if I were to, if I had a farm stand and I were to import thousands of pounds of tomato and then make tomato sauce, is that considered on-site?
It's, it's, it's produced or grown.
Right. Yeah, right.
Cause that's what, like when we, you know, with Jerry, when we started all this, Jerry was not making any wine from his own. He was making it from other people's product. So it was, I think we gave him a conditional, like in two years you have to. I think it told me go to the CBA and then, you know, ticket to Paris, cause we couldn't authorize that. And then, you know, he went out of business.
Mm-hmm.
So. Yeah, it's supposed to be thirty-five percent. You know, from looking at the history, that's, that's what's been the problem with the state is it's turned into a grocery store.
Right.
And not a farm stand.
Right.
So that's why I think the law is what it is.
So, so Mike, just to clarify that, three thousand dollars, you have to have three thousand dollars worth of product in the store?
Not including the wine here and tobacco. That's my understanding. Again, I'm not a liquor license expert here by any stretch. But, um, there's a, there are minimum requirements under the, under the regulatory portion of the liquor commission that has the stipulation. For example, you can't consume this alcohol on premises, under these licenses. There are other licenses that allow you to, but not this type of license. This is something akin to what would be for the Irving or the Shell Station. It's a similar type of license for that. Where they have, you know, substantial quantities of food product, but I can't, uh, go to the Irving Station, grab a six-pack, walk out to the tables they have out there and crack open a beer. That's a violation of their liquor license. So I, I think these are the two issues that we need to think about, which is, one, are you gonna be able to comply and not? I guess this is the real question, right? Three thousand dollars worth of, of, at what point does it cross that threshold to become a real retail store? Which is in violation of our zoning.
Well, I, I think that threshold is set by the thirty-five percent.
It's, I, I would say it's, it's not set by the thirty-five percent. It's, it's mitigated by the thirty-five percent, right? Correct.
Is there an axon in grocery stock?
Uh, no, you need at least that in order to comply with the license, the liquor license.
It's why, it's why you see all these gas stations, modules. Because to have three thousand bucks in there. And you have to have those six food groups and all this stuff.
Yeah.
So, so that's the state's issue. That's the state's requirement.
Correct.
For that. So as far as Newfields, I would think it would be up to us to determine, which I think we have. And unless it wants to be reviewed, the thirty-five percent thing that would allow them to apply for that license at that location?
He already has that.
Yeah.
He just has. He's a liquor party. He, he's fine with store. We're not. So the thirty-five thing is met. So.
Well, the thirty-five.
The question becomes, how does this influence that thirty-five percent?
No, I think this rolls into my question, which is, are, is there over three thousand dollars worth of food product there?
I don't think that's up to the tenant to figure out.
Except, here's, here's where the tenant, it is, the town has a role to play here. The liquor commission asked the town about this license. That's, they do every liquor license. The town has to respond if the town has any issues with this issuance of the liquor license. If we're issued, if we say there's nothing wrong and it ends up that in order to comply with the liquor license requirements, he has to violate our ordinances, then the town does have an issue.
Right.
And so this is, I'm sure this is why you're here to discuss this and make sure that in that, if the town feels necessary to respond back to the liquor commission to say that this, this is an issue that the, the state needs to address in issuing its, its license.
I agree. And I also think that the thirty-five percent thing is frankly a separate issue from this. He could, he could very well get a liquor license to do this and then we may find that he's not in compliance with the thirty-five percent. But I, I don't think they're necessarily connected.
No, I agree with that.
Right.
Jeremiah, so you say you're doing BYOB. What kind of license do you have to have? Is that?
You don't need a license.
Is that under food service license?
No, you don't get any license at all. It's the same way that, like, if I wanted to have a party, I want all my friends to come over. I say, bring some beer, come over, it's the same.
So how, I mean, I just see, you say BYOB, somebody goes in the store, buys a four pack of beer.
I mean.
They walk across the parking lot, drink it, right? How?
I mean, I, well, if I can just back up to two things I want to say. I think one is all these rules and regulations when the state comes to do their inspection are gonna inspect me for, like, do I have three thousand dollars worth of food on the shelf? So like, whether the town, either way, I would be inspected for that by the state, which is why the state puts out a liquor inspection. So I think that would are, you know, and we do have over three thousand dollars worth of food on the shelf easily. We also have, like, all five food groups, et cetera. So as far as the BYOB versus buying in the store, I mean, besides me saying you're not allowed to drink on the property, I'm not sure how else I can regulate that. You know, if, if, if the planning board thinks that a liquor license that allows for both selling in store and drinking on premises is a better license, I'm willing to look into that. That was not my intent. My intent was just to try to sell beer in line in the store. That's like what I'm just trying to.
I know. I think I understood that entirely. In all honesty, I would make the suggestion, whether you follow the advice, you know, you may want to look at getting licensed for, that allows consumption on premises, especially when you're doing events on premises. Because.
It's two separate properties, though. And the store is on his property and the events are on conservation.
Some of that's ours. I should just add, this is not.
But I think it's all the same parcel.
I'm not sure this is related or not, but we have a commercial kitchen in Canterbury that we rent, operate out of, where we all work value by food. And we're applying for a restaurant license there and a catering license, which would then allow us to do open container service. So if, if we decide to do that restaurant license, we want to cater a event on the farm, in theory, is one of our licenses, so that we can do that open container service. So I'm not necessarily doing only one thing, but as far as my intent goes, the license requirements for the town, the town involved, are only for the beer and wine service, or beer and wine served, you know, in the bottom of the store. If I have a restaurant license and a catering license and I want to cater a event on the farm that has open container, you know, as long as I have all my licensure insured, I'd, you know, I think I'm allowed to do that.
You know, I, I, thinking about it, the only thing would be, and it's really not, it's liquor enforcement. If they don't like somebody going in to the store, walking across the parking lot and drinking it, one of the things that I've learned from them is that they want their money, right? So I, you know, you pay rooms and meals tax now, right? So that would, you know, doesn't make it that if that's what they're, you know, so you need a license and you have to start paying rooms and meals tax on that, that liquor.
If we pay. Catering.
No, because we're serving, you know, everything that we serve in our winery gets taxed, rooms and meals taxes. All the food we serve.
But this is. He's not, he's not serving it, he's just selling it.
Well, but I don't know. I'm just saying, you should make sure the liquor commission is okay with that, cause I know how enforcement is if that's your plan.
I totally.
Cause you don't want to go too far and have them come down and say, you can't do this.
Yeah.
They're very fair to people.
Try to avoid taxing.
So let's assume I, I go and he's having, maybe he's not even having an event. I'm just gonna go and have dinner. As maybe I want to just sit there and have some food. And I'm allowed to bring my own beer. Is there anything stopping me from buying it in the store? And now it's my beer, I'm bringing my own over to the. Then.
You're getting into the liquor commission enforcement and, you know, what? As a town, I don't care. I'm just raising it as an issue and I just want to make sure that he's aware of it. Clearly he is, which is great. I think the, the bottom line issue here now is, it's the thirty-five percent. I'm sorry. The, the question before the board is, in order to stay within our ordinances, are you gonna have thirty-five percent of, of your, um, food for sale associated with your farm?
Well, I guess I would just say that I have to be in that, I have to abide by that rule regardless of whether I sell beer or wine. So if the question is, would the addition of beer and wine then make me unable to reach my thirty-five percent goal? I mean, I don't think so, but I have no idea how much beer and wine I'm gonna sell. I will say that we sell, the vast majority of our products is what we grow on our farm. So, I mean, you know, I ideally not turn over my votes to show everybody what my thirty-five percent is, but I, I can honestly tell you that the vast majority of what we sell is chicken that we grow on our farm.
And I would say, at the time that this came about, when this was created, I don't think, frankly, alcohol was even considered as a.
No, no, but this. Moving beyond the alcohol issue, just now, because it's a issue of whether it's conflicting with our zoning or not. And from a standpoint of the zoning, the, the way he gets around the zoning is by complying with, uh, what is it, RSA twenty-one something, which deals with our resources.
Right.
And that part, it says it's gotta be, you know, a certain percentage of the stuff from the farm. And if he's saying that it's gonna be that, then okay, he gets around our zoning.
No, I just didn't know, at the time, the, the money from alcohol was never considered.
Yeah, no.
So it seemed like a reasonable number, I don't.
I mean, there are other farm stores that sell beer and wine. So it's not, you know, not as if like this is the first farm store.
Oh, no, no. No, but again, it's, it's dependent upon the local zoning. Right? And that's what we're trying to address, because if the state wants to know if the town is okay with it, we have to make sure that this is okay with our zoning.
Yeah, and we, we adopted the state definition of our. We don't have anything.
Technically, I don't think we've ever adopted anything, but under, under the RSA's.
No, we.
Oh, didn't.
The town, we didn't have.
Oh, we didn't. Oh, okay, great, great. Okay. Now, I don't think the town needs to, at this point in time, respond back to the state and let's, let's just go through it. Unless the state comes back with us with questions.
I, I don't know what the state's gonna need. If the board approves the right for us to sell beer and wine, I don't know what the state needs from the board to confirm that, so.
No, typically what happens is, is that the state will inform us that you have applied for a liquor license and the town has two weeks to, to provide any feedback if it has concern back to the liquor commission. The liquor commission doesn't hear from the town, then the assumption, the liquor commission typically is, okay, the town's good. This is why this discussion is important, because we need to make sure that everyone here and the town is comfortable that this is not gonna violate our ordinances.
Yeah, it says right on here, uh, you may submit data, views, comments, or other materials there, but there's a respect for potential issuance, issuance of the liquor license. This information won't be taken into consideration. So. So I assume if we say nothing, then it's.
Here's my only concern. I tried just to let you guys.
Yep.
Work this out as best you will, and I think you've done a great job. My concern here is, if we don't say something to the liquor commission to let them understand that this is not deemed in the town of Newfields as a grocery store.
Oh.
This is deemed as a farm stand, because a grocery store would be in contradiction with our zoning requirements. And then the, then the burger is on the applicant to make that understood to the state liquor commission. Because if, if, the minute we go down the road saying we have no concerns, then in the future, when everybody looks at this statute which says these permits are only granted to either a pharmacy or a grocery store, we've cut ourselves off at the knees.
Yes.
So should we just be saying it's considered under twenty-one thirty-four A?
Twenty-one thirty-four A.
Agri agriculture farming. This is.
Yeah, this is a farm stand. In compliance with the state definition for farming.
Twenty-one thirty-four A. And that, that while it is, it is in a, a zone that prohibits retail, we consider it a farm stand, that, that applies with the RSA's.
Correct.
Fine. Select board, select board can draft a letter and select board will take the initiative to inform.
Because I think they really are expecting to hear from this likelihood.
Typically, they do. But like when Irving applied for the license, you know, we had nothing to say. Cause it, you know, it, it complied with the zoning in there.
Right. And they're like, that approved a convenience.
Right. No, no, that's fine. I, I can draft, I'll, I'll draft a letter, I'll talk to the select board members, make sure they're comfortable with the letter and we'll get that off.
That's perfect. You know, I remember, I think the last time you were here, Jeremiah, was to change your hours. There was some neighbors who had some issues. Is that, I guess that's historically, can we go back and find out what the hours were supposed to be? I mean, cause, cause I, I guess I'm thinking. Well, what I'm, I'm thinking is, he's having an, I think we, we might have said, you know, nine to six or something. So I'm thinking, he might have to come back to us and say, well, I'm gonna have an event and it's gonna go at ten o'clock at night. But we already told him, you can only keep that store open until six o'clock. So I think, can you go back to the records and find out what we agreed to on hours?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I, it wasn't a mistake. Our site plan is that we operate until eight.
Yeah.
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 Absolutely.
Till what?
Till eight, eight P M.
I, I just remember you came back and extended it.
We said we got extra meat. I don't think we actually had hours of operation on our first site plan.
I think that's true.
And then we added hours of operation to end at P M.
Do you think you're gonna need it beyond eight P M?
No. All of our events are forced to eight. And it says on our website, and personally I like that, cause I have some things I want to do besides technically.
It's like, you probably have people that are.
You don't have the time, that's what you're doing.
So it's like, I just.
So Glenn, if I draft a letter, can I write by you?
Absolutely, sure.
Great. Should the planning board be?
As long as the planning board is comfortable with.
That's like we're doing it, so we'll, we'll take care of it.
Yes. Do we need to make a motion on that? Should we make a motion?
I think as long as it's reflected in the minutes.
All right.
I, I agree. I don't think it has to be.
Can I just, what is the letter gonna say?
It's basically gonna say that, um, this is, this isn't a, a, uh, retail establishment, because we're all agricultural retail establishments and are allowed. But this is a farm stand, which is allowed under twenty-one thirty-four A and the town recognizes it as such, which allow, which would allow you to do, do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Just so they can refer to you as something out there.
Yeah, exactly. Grocery store or retail facility. Again, to Glenn's point, it, it creates a bad precedent if we don't. Yeah. Potential precedent that it opens a Pandora's box. So while we're comfortable with the farm stand aspect of this, we don't want to go beyond that.
Then make sure to ask all the women for their ID, cause if you don't, it's, what do you think? Fifty? They want, they want you. You're so young.
Forty-four years old.
All right, you'll sell. I'll sell. Any other discussion on the topic? Are we good? All right. Thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next. I know we tried to do this last month, but we didn't have four.
Why don't you get down to the Great Bay Nitrogen?
Sure, we can do that, yeah. All right, so we're gonna do the Great Bay Nitrogen from that. So Glenn, you want to lead us off?
No.
Okay.
I will.
I prefer the nitrogen.
Sure, so, um, just as background, and I know that's been discussed, I'll go quick. The EPA and the HHS has basically entered into a general permit, and this town agreed to enter into the general permit to try to control nitrogen in Great Bay. By entering into the general permit, the town agreed to take certain measures to try to mitigate nitrogen beyond what the, you know, the wastewater facility treatment plant is doing. That means that the town now, which had really no role before, is now gonna have to have a role. The role's not onerous, but what the town needs to do is figure out who in town is going to be responsible mainly for reporting requirements. Inputting information, learning how and inputting information into basically a software interface that says the town did these things in order to try to mitigate nitrogen discharge from the town. Now, it's things like, certainly stuff at the wastewater treatment plant is well applicable, but it's also things like stormwater runoff, which has roads involved. Obviously, with the roads department, it also can be things like ordinances by the Select Board that could have an impact on nitrogen, stuff like this. So all of these entities, and it also includes planning, because planning could introduce ordinances that would, you know, provide credits for the town to perform compliance under this general permit. So everybody here is kind of in the same mix. We have to figure out who's the unlucky person or entity that is going to be responsible for collecting the information from everybody and importing it on a regular basis so that the DES and EPA can be satisfied that we're complying with the general permit. So that's what we're.
From our perspective, from a regulatory perspective, we have one of the best stormwater runoff in this area. And you absolutely, and I think I would recommend we just ask Jamie who let the stormwater center review it. You know, Allison and I pushed that seven years ago, got it through. So I think that's one key thing. But the other thing that they're gonna be looking for is, you know, to our credit, is gonna be we have a lot of open space, we have a lot of land in conservation. This whole approach, because it's a general permit, is they're not looking at just a wastewater plant, they're looking at an entire contribution. And because everything in all the land in town goes into the bay, to the watershires, they're gonna look at, they're gonna like give us points for, we have a lot of conservation land, we have a good stormwater ordinance. You know, and I think what you're seeing, you've heard like MS4 stuff, right? This is kind of back way of MS4. So it's gonna be like, you know, did you clean the catch bases? How we made it an effort with dog crap? I just have fallbacks out of the pond, but without the, sitting there, people leave. So it's not, I don't think it's a huge effort. And I think we've got a lot already happening that's good, so.
Well, there's math everywhere, you know?
Yeah.
It's part of the stormwater asset management.
So would be, you know, what I've seen before is most of the catch bases are probably on state roads anyway. So we would go to DOT and say, give us your cleaning record on it.
And that's been my question of, well, who, and we're responsible for treating, probably more water through us than from the state in New Hampshire than what we'd actually put in the water. And that's the main hassle, what's the state's responsibility on that whole thing? Because everything that runs through our town to the river comes from, a lot of it comes from maybe five, maybe seven.
No.
State roads. They're catch bases, and we have to maintain everything below it, what they flow.
You know, last year, we had the put on the DOT tenure priority list was, that was one separate item, stormwater, you know, putting it properly, you know, put it sub catch bases on all the state roads. You know, maybe with infrastructure, we're gonna see some money, but that kind of puts the state on notice that, yeah, you're not doing your part, and then I think when the feds come back, well, Newfields is doing the best we can. So, you know, it'd be, I think it's really comes down to clean, keeping, cleaning. Solting isn't part of this, you know, how you solve really isn't a concern.
No, because this is nitrogen. This is a nitrogen issue, and really only a nitrogen issue. And that's what they're gonna track and try to measure in the bay and then use that as the, you know, report card for all the unions' power to open the next five years.
You know, the more things you can put on this list, the better it's going to be, you know, that when it comes down to. Because what, I mean, you should go back and look at that WISE project. The WISE project put points on the good things, bad ones on the negative things. Like, we don't have a lot of impertinent service. You know, I'm thinking about this, and I was reading a little bit about it. We may need to have a selectmen do some type of ordinance. There's catch bases down in, they get, they're down in their lot, right?
Down where?
Down in the industrial area.
In Coed Lot?
Coed Lot.
Oh, yeah.
That those should probably be an ordinance put on, that they have to clean those twice a year.
Well, I mean, we clean our catch bases, we clean those, because that's all the water that runs through there.
Because it's our plant, it's our property.
But you're picking up, so just as long as it's cleaned.
We clean them all. When we clean that now, when we clean that fire, we clean everything in the fire, because it's all, everything around that's our main line.
The critical issue, though, is, as much as it's, these are the things we should do, what we have to figure out is?
Document.
Who's gonna report, who's gonna collect the information and report it? Now, okay, I'll speak for the Select Board. I'm not sure the personnel downstairs are the ones who are the best ones to do that. I don't think Derek.
It's not me.
You're talking about over there.
I'm talking about Sue, and she checked it up.
No, I can't do that. I'm not gonna drink water.
I'm pretty sure we can't voice it onto the police department either. So it becomes a question of who's it gonna be? Is it gonna be Planning Board? Is it assigned somebody to do this? Is it the water district that's gonna collect this information and do it? Is it the road agent, or is it a member of the Select Board?
Well, I think it'd be nice if we had a list, okay, what needs to be done, what needs to be documented. Once we see that list, then we can.
To be honest, the biggest thing to collect is the information about when they are cleaning out, they and the state is cleaning out the.
Catch bases.
The catch bases.
So that, I mean, that's pretty, that's not the big, I mean, the two days.
That's the biggest data collection.
It's just gonna be, it's just gonna be documented.
Yeah.
And if the state's doing it to document they did it.
Okay.
I mean, the Rivers Committee, we're doing stuff that you can also be credit for. We're putting out stuff on keeping your system.
Do they have forms that need to be filled out?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be basically a software system that needs to be imported, what'd they say, I assume, quarterly?
I think, I think it doesn't size, it might just be your.
It could be annually.
I'm gonna say, we don't do it. It's not like we do it.
No, 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 no.
We do it once. But what, Michael, so that means realistically, we have to go around and either number or somehow we gotta track every catch basin, so we know.
You have that.
Number 36 got done this year, number 54 got done last year, or whatever, so.
Well, once, once we get the stormwater.
We have it back, we did it back.
Well, and the stormwater asset management, you know, that product should help us, right?
Right, it should help us, but, I mean, not only is it the catch basins, but it's like I asked at the last meeting we had in here, was what about the detention ponds, the bio, the bio detention, the retention?
Yeah, it's that stuff too, right?
All these ponds, swales, level spreaders.
That's where maybe in our regulations, we need to put something in, put the owners on the developer to, when we just approve two more upon Old Road, right?
I think we do that, isn't it?
Well, I thought we said it turns over, didn't we just say it turns over?
The issue is, is it goes to the homeowners association, and then they don't do anything with it?
It is homeowners.
It's, right. And I think to Bill's point is, do we start to require these associations or whoever is in, that if they don't, let's say, do the mowing and do the maintenance of these, then you'll do it and we're gonna build it?
Yeah, but it's, and like we talked before, we've got the, they're ages, early 90s, that have never had anything done. And we go in, get them back to what they're supposed to be, or we just leave them all grown up, free?
Well, I distinctly remember when we did that, approved that subdivision across McCarry Lake on Holsmold Road, somebody had a rain yard in there.
No, it's three.
Yeah, it's three, and we specifically, in the, you know, in the plans, we made them take care of those rain yards.
Yeah, what happened?
Who do we monitor?
Well, that's just it, yeah, right, I guess.
Well, get credit for having it in the ordinance, but in terms of monitoring, if we can't monitor it, then we're not gonna get credit.
Right, and three years from now, who remembers that those are even there?
Well, they want, you know, put it on the list, right? We just approved to start that process, and every area that was looked at, it's maintained.
Right, it was done, just to get to the point where we can track or keep it down.
Right, but there are ones that were approved 10 years ago, that.
Well, there's one on the same one, right, two of them, that's a little bit.
Right.
Lily Lane, is there a homeowners association on Lily? Yeah, well, I don't think there is.
Yeah, there's a lot of problems.
And then houses closed, but the wording wasn't in the deed, and you're not gonna have.
So can we ask?
Some of that stuff, some of this stuff gets put in, but never gets swallowed through.
So boards change?
Boards change, exactly.
Select boards change, personnel changes.
It's a small, it's not people.
Can we ask Glenn to try to find some language to put in probably site plan that would address that somehow, I mean, like, if the detention ponds are this guy's front yard, the guy out the street's gonna say, it's not my stormwater, it's in his yard, so, you know, you, I don't know, have you ever seen anything like that? I mean, if there's no association, who?
They were allowed, like, through legislation five or seven years ago for towns to be able to establish stormwater utilities. That would, that's just what they would do, their responsibility would be maintaining the stormwater infrastructure, either privately, through making the private landowner do it, or for those features that are on public land, they take care of those as well. But on private land, there's an assessment, there's an assessment to the utility to make sure that those inspections and the required maintenance to make the stormwater device do what it's supposed to do. Um, because you could, at the planning board phase, we could set up a bond, that bond is gonna disappear in five or six years.
Just like every other board.
Yeah, exactly.
And we don't need to track, we have a few.
Yeah, I don't. And you're not gonna, if you rely on that, that function at the end of six years, who the hell are you going to to refinance that law?
So would we have to either change our ordinances to allow the town to act like a utility and assess private?
I do need to act to do.
Or do we have to establish a separate utility in the town? I prefer not to have to do that.
I think that's where you're headed, is you're gonna establish a townwide stormwater, whatever.
Ordinance or utility?
Utility, yeah.
It's a utility because you're going out dealing with on-the-ground facilities.
Okay, so can I ask this question?
I don't know if any captain have taken the step to do this. I just know that the state.
Allows it.
As the nation's so talented.
Five will get you 10, a lot of the towns in the general permit are gonna start instituting utilities to be able to address this on private.
They're gonna have to.
They're gonna have to.
They're gonna have to.
So here's my question. Can we empower the Water and Sewer District as an existing utility to act as that utility in the town without having to expand the Water and Sewer District?
No, we've got enough headaches.
I get it, right? Hey, come on, just one shot.
My answer to that is yes, because it becomes their, I understand completely why you would say.
No, 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 I get it, I get it. Can't believe the guys can try.
You can't. I do believe you can, piggyback the utility. I have no doubt that you can do.
So what I see happening is somebody going over to approve. Here, the water detention pond in Deer Trees owned by their association is over present.
Right.
The town via its utility.
It should have, it should be in the town, right?
Should be, but let's, but let's say it's on their property, right? They're not maintaining it properly. The town goes in through our utility, we fix it up, and we build the association? Correct?
But they have to have an association in place.
They have to.
That's a trigger, right?
Well, some of these do, some of them don't.
So is there a way to say, okay, let's say back to the league, those six, even if there isn't association, those six separate laws have a responsibility to maintain those two ponds and the groundwater? If they, if it's not maintained, the town will do it, and you're assessing.
So is that, we can tell the union, say, hey, we found that these two ponds are not being maintained, you have the opportunity to do it, respond to us with estimates and schedules, or else we will do it, and it will cost.
Like anything else, Hazel Park, we mentioned the school. We told him, you need to do this because it's not complying with the ordinance. If you don't, we're coming in and doing it, and we're gonna build it. Same kind of situation.
Don't we build it?
Yep.
We pay it, yeah?
No, he hasn't paid. Derek's gone to the court.
Damn.
Derek's went to the court. Derek's gone to the court to try to basically get the money, extract the money, and allow us to basically do it.
It's not like, like, if you look at, for every example with home fashions, five years ago, they wanted to put this big dish on, down there, and they could, they started the work, they built this retention pond for water and drainage and everything down there, and then they constructed, they never finished, they never did anything, so there's a detention pond.
Right.
But who won't, who maintains it? Who, you know, they had to build, they had to build that. Going to the site plant and everything, but it's still.
Here's a question for you. In the stormwater asset management grant that we received, are they going around and documenting all the detention ponds in town?
I don't believe so. I know they've done all the catch bases and drainage, they've done a lot. I don't think they've done any of them.
Ah, that's too bad.
Why couldn't we have them do that?
I mean, it's. They might be able to, I mean.
They gotta get paid.
Well, sure, right.
You could go back and go back 30 years, and all the plants are on markets downstairs, right? Say, Deer Trees.
Are you volunteering to do that?
No. But, I mean, so another thought would be, you hire a consultant, like we talked about, a few thousand bucks, or is this something RCCT would do for us?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know that RCCT does this kind of.
Yeah, I don't, it's new, so.
I think the first thing would be to find out which companies have homes. So Scamlin and Heath, they have two ponds up there, they never did maintain it.
No.
And I believe they were supposed to have homeowners associations.
And they may?
They may, but the problem is people who went and out of there, if it's not followed up, they don't have somebody's job that they couldn't manage.
Maybe they're gonna be bigger.
They might supposed to have one, but it's never established, and the town doesn't make them maintain it. Show proof that they've established it, but they should make the developer establish it when he turns the front, when he, in the approval, should be home, so everybody, it's in the deed.
Yeah.
When they buy the thing, that there's a homeowners association responsible for the maintenance of.
I think in many of those cases, we've got, we've acquired that, but that's where it stops.
Yeah, it stops.
Right, exactly. The bottom line is, you know, yes, we're gonna probably end up paying somebody to do this, and to be perfectly honest, if somebody has, if there's an environmental engineering company out there, I would figure out how to have this service available, because I think every town.
Oh, there's a lot.
General permit is going to need to go back and do this.
There are several engineering firms that this is their bread and butter, right?
Yep.
Stormwater management and compliance, especially for those communities that have, there's something for the MS4.
Yeah, I bet, I get it, somebody who's gonna go back and go back through 30 years of records and say, this detention pond of this size is owned now by this entity and who's responsible for maintaining it and provide that back to the town so that they can comply with this general permit. It's gonna be huge. So who's the unlucky person in town who gets to do this?
What about the private?
Well, I would document them too. We have to.
Yeah, if you're discharging off your property, you're.
Into the basin, yeah.
Don't we have a vineyard engineer who wants to do this?
A wine.
Yeah, I'd be willing to step in and start the process, but I think, I think we're hitting it. It's, I think the whole thing about going back in history is kind of over here. You know, we can start.
Chip away at that over time.
I think we can chip away at, you know, one one looks so bad, the newer ones. But I think we should, first we should make sure we have some language for the next one.
That makes it clear.
Yeah, no doubt about that.
And then maybe if this.
Well, I can certainly find that one.
And by the way, just getting the language in is gonna be a checkmark for us on the board.
And I think the first thing is, we're gonna find out, do we need to establish a utility? A stormwater utility?
Yeah.
And then start, yeah. I mean, some of that might be a positive, because maybe that utility can go after money specific to.
For me.
I mean, there's state money up there, running around with different stuff, so. No, I don't mind giving it a shot.
Woo-hoo, got it.
Five thousand dollars.
For life?
Yeah. But I think, I think at some point, you're gonna need, we're gonna need some expertise more on kind of the legal side of things.
Oh, no, no doubt. Look, I think the big issue that we have to figure out, and again, kudos to Yousis for saying you're interested in stepping up, is just getting somebody to figure out, okay, here's all the things that we can and need to report, and, you know, talk to Brian and say, okay, I need you to number their catch basins and report and provide this information every six months or annually, which ones you clean and when, right? I need the Select Board to do X, Y, and Z and report on any ordinances that they either implemented or changed to state, to town rules, so that you can then report that. Or the Planning Board, I mean, or things that Ray does that does, you know. Or the planning board, I mean, or things that Ray does that does, you know, water and sewer treatment, whatever we can give credit for, it's gonna be part of the reporting system. It's just somebody has to basically be on point.
What, HTA is gonna file a report. They file it anyway, so that's nothing to tie it, it's two different entities.
You don't go to the last meeting?
Yeah.
The one at the library.
We had one over at Ray's office with HTA, we were talking.
Yeah. And that's where they talked about the fact that this software system that's gonna be utilized for me to report.
UNH Stormwater Center has developed software and the DEDs and the feds, I guess, have approved it. So it's kind of, you fill out this form and that's it. But, you know, we gotta get into it some, but I think part of the lies of what we have all this data saying X number of square feet is in conservation center. Yeah, that's another thing, you gotta keep that up, right? You gotta update this stuff all the time to show them what we're doing, so. But then, I mean, and the other thing, I think when we're talking wastewater is you're doing, looking at alternatives. If you're looking at new water lines, right, a connection into new market.
Oh, yeah?
I think we should go to new market. That's gonna be, how are we gonna do that?
In the town, yes.
What is a lot?
Yeah, I mean.
I think, I'm just, I think because it's gonna be far cheaper to pump our storage to either. Put a separate line down, media.
And then use that.
You know, when they write down 108, they would call it a market, so it doesn't get pumped twice.
Do what the same on the divorce, so.
I talked about that before they get to. But then, yeah, we're talking on HCA connection. No, because it's gonna be a cost to get them, I think it's a breaking plan.
Great, well, is that plant they built, they built it alive? We gotta, we gotta set up a grant, they built that sewer treatment, right?
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, right, seventy-five percent, twenty percent stay, ninety percent.
Which one you call, don't you test, sir?
Yes. Well, you know, that could come again, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
I think we're too much in the both of the town.
Yeah.
So who's gonna look at whether we need to become a utility or not? Is that something? RC.
I'll take a look.
RC.
I mean, I can send you the information I have on it.
Why don't you, and then I'll take a look, because at the end of the day, it's gonna be, have to be something that's addressed by a full select board in the town.
In the interim though, what can we do with the little things?
We've got, we've got to file a report, I think we're supposed to actually be behind anyway. Just, I'll come up with a spreadsheet, it's just gonna be a simple spreadsheet. Did, would DLT, do they give you information when they clean their catch bases?
They do pretty regularly. I don't think they do it every, I don't think anybody does.
Yeah, it's, you're gonna have to do a report, when you clean it, how much stuff you took out, was it over the inlet of, of this stuff?
Each hole's.
And then, because they might come back and say, I need to do it twice a year.
No, we don't have to do it twice a year, thank you.
That's a good one.
We've got catch bases downtown, like three years, it's not.
I know.
We talked about that last time, but you know, this, the ones that are full, the ones that haven't been touched in ten years. You know, the ones up on some of the back roads. Downtown, we'll do them pretty regularly, there's not a lot of bullet leaves or anything. And we don't use, we don't use sand in that. That's one reason we don't use the sand, because it goes in the drains.
There's still the catch basin, right?
Yeah.
Did HTA ever look at, how many, there's three outfalls in total, right?
Two.
Two?
Well, two, we don't have.
Because that would be a huge thing, well, we can go and say there's no illicit connections. You know, because I go down the landing, there's never anything running in it. And if you can document that to the feds, that's a big MS4 thing. So where's the other road?
Well, there's one down at Land, thirty-ish, then there's one down on Fashions, product and mine goes underneath the tracks. Everything on that side goes down underneath there. Now, then you have the brook by Conners that goes into the river.
Cardenbrook?
That's just water that runs off three.
And then you have the ones that work up here that also run down.
Yeah, they have to work down here.
See, now that.
We don't dump anything from our tank close or any system.
Into there.
So you got.
The Conner Brook, that comes also to Deer Trees.
Cardenbrook, yeah, collects deer trees, yeah, I mean, then it runs out. Are there catch basins in Deer Trees? No, I didn't think so. It's just collecting the runoff, right? Into the pond there up behind the hack and house, and then from the pond down. All right, well, you'll give me the information about the utility and Bill, you're gonna take a first crack at seeing what we have to do?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on this, no? Okay, good. All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Ray, you disappointed, you didn't get to take it all over?
No.
My tribe valid.
Give it a shot.
You're a smart man.
Right, I'm just, we behave, just got one. EBS is another set that's different. And we got, we got, we can go for that, and we have it now. That's all. Unbelievable.
Hopefully we get some money.
By the way, Ray, you guys are beginning for the wells and the valves before the end of the year, the arper month.
Okay.
I told Donna to cut you guys a chat.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so keep an eye on for it, okay? Your mind, okay?
Good.
Thanks, Ray.
All right. Close zoning amendments. Ready to have a copy?
In the first thing, tonight, only changes from last month are what's involved, so.
From two months ago.
Right.
So literally, there's no changes to the, the number one. We, all we did was change the location. From the very first proposal, all we did was change where it's going to be located in the ordinance. So it's a little bit closer up at the beginning, so people see it further. And then I wrote the word two with two of parentheses, second, I never gave any change for that.
Yep.
Number three actually shouldn't be bold, that didn't change at all from the last time we saw it. And on the last page, they were claiming the places are prohibited. The last month said that they were permitted. That was my mistake, so we made certain they're prohibited. Those are the only changes from what we discussed.
Should that be capitalized? I don't know, should it be capitalized?
That should be in the best. It should be.
Do you have a question?
Word of charge. My number two. They should be. Articles of that should be that on horizontal, so that should be fine.
We're on this whole sidewalk thing, Glenn. We can't find a plan, so did you approach RPC?
I did, and then they sent me, Scott Google sent me, quite a bit of stuff, it's all old is the problem. But I'm gonna fashion a little five-page plan so that we can reference that five-page plan in this statement. And now this is site, this goes into site plan and subdivision, so we don't have to, we don't have the same constraints, we never have a town meeting code. So, I have one map and I really like the nairs, but I'm gonna ask them to update it. Because the one section of sidewalk going to the school, it shows as being under construction. And it's not under construction anymore, it's literally there, so I just, I'm just gonna ask them to make an amendment to that plan. Then we'll have a perfectly adequate plan that is the result of public input from the town because it became part of the draft application that the town submitted to DOT. In order for that to happen, there had to be public input. So we'll be able to, and I'll say that in the plan, that it was public back input, public input on the extent of downtown sidewalks in town, where they're building, why they're building. And then the master plan actually has good language about why we have to fund because it doesn't make sense to do a lot of sidewalk activity in dispersed places all over the rural parts of town. So that will cover the reasoning for having to fund and using those funds someplace other than the subdivision for which people are leaving sex. So once we have this, I'm sure that we are covered for future assessment of sidewalk foot feeds. I mean, once I put together, and before you guys go ready, I'm gonna get Derek.
Yeah.
But that, that I really can't promise, Ray.
So apologize if this is, to death, but as I read this, it says as an alternative created by the planning board in the applicant, appropriate financial arrangement to be established. What if the applicant says, nah, I'm gonna build the sidewalks here? Is it not our determination, the planning board, that would determine, no, we're gonna take the money and put it here? Could that be a point of contention with the developer? I don't know why. I don't know why they wouldn't rather just.
I don't see how that would fly, because what they're basically saying is, regardless of your development, if, even if you want to put sidewalks in your development, we're gonna basically extract money from you to do sidewalks someplace else. How does that survive?
No, I don't know, I just.
I mean, the reason that it's put here as something that gets negotiated with the developer is exactly that reason.
Yep.
Because otherwise you.
Yeah, it's gonna cost you a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, in core.
We're just gonna take it and use it over here on someone else's development, potentially.
Most, usually, they're gonna be saying, I'm happy giving you eight thousand dollars for your sidewalk projects in someplace else, because I don't want that hassle of doing them in my own development.
But then they can't advertise it as a, as a family friendly.
Well, you know, they think that it's gonna help them sell their houses, they may want the sidewalks.
Should we then have something in our orders saying, they have to maintain the sidewalks? Because we get people moving in and saying, hey, you know, my sidewalk's tired. So should we have something in there saying, one of these assessment?
Well. I wanna go walk in their neighborhood and they say, whoa, 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 these are our sidewalks.
But if people are on the understanding that, oh, they're not planning on clearing them in the winter, I don't care, you know, that's, how do you get around?
I mean, that's, that's always an issue in some towns, just maintain their sidewalks.
Yeah.
But even in towns that maintain their sidewalks, they don't maintain them everywhere. Except, except if there's a good job of maintaining a lot of sidewalks, but they don't maintain a tiny side.
Yeah, they go a step further though, Bill.
Well, yeah.
There's almost no development areas left in town that's gonna be of sizable nature where the sidewalks are gonna be extensive enough where it's gonna be an issue. I mean, everything's in conservation, there may be one or two, but for the most part, it's not like we have thirty potential developments here that we have to think about.
I just can't think of a developer who's gonna say, I want sidewalks.
You all have.
I, I.
You know, you're part of your service, you have the AOT's figure, all this brings up all this stuff.
No, I just did.
Quickly.
Because in the past, the discussion was, we're gonna take your money and build sidewalks. There was never, I don't remember an negotiation.
It worked for, worked for quite a while.
No, 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 there was never any input from the, there was never any debate about it. We just.
I was probably happy for the board to think about that, because this is just the draft.
No, I'm really.
You're gonna see this at least twice again before we're gonna.
I don't think so. I just made it, but, all right.
You wanna make a motion to accept the assessment, is that what you wanna do?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second, okay.
The zoning.
Yes.
The zoning, not the sidewalk, is that's catch or something, is that a sidewalk?
Right, okay. So we have a motion to accept the zoning assessment? Do you have a second? You have fellows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
One, one other thing, how are we gonna sell number one? What's our approach?
Josh is asking to come up with an informational brochure on all. And so, and I'll do that, and I'll do that for our January meeting so that we can send this stuff out through, you know, the end of January, fall to February. It can be available maybe at the town clerk's desk, what do you call that? Captain?
Super job, I'm watching that.
Number one, should that word be?
And then we discussed it deliver the session because of the, it's gonna be a warrant, believe me, correct?
I would say maybe.
This, these are zoning proposals, so they don't get discussed at the deliver the session.
Oh, great.
So what did we just accept then?
Is no warrant, it's still standing with me?
Warrant? But these questions to go on the warrant?
To go on the zoning ballot, yes.
Okay, so that's what we just voted on.
That's what you just voted.
So none of the meetings with this vote tonight are changing tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
There are no changes to these, other than the other four ones, like they're making the cap, which doesn't, that doesn't require a second.
So these were accepted to put this warrant on the zoning ballot?
Correct.
Can it, can we, can it be put on the warrant to discuss it at the meeting? I mean, would there be a benefit to that, Mike, or?
Now technically, we cover the warrants, you know, this is one of the downfall of losing town meeting, right? We cover the warrants that are gonna be on the town ballot, that's what we cover.
Because these, these public hearings that we have to talk about these, these serve as the deliver the session for zoning proposals. It's as simple as that, and then all the other warrants, they only get created through the board's selection in time for deliver the session. And that's why zoning proposals don't get to be discussed at the deliver the session.
Well, is it prohibitive? Is there?
Yeah.
Is it prohibitive?
You're absolutely not.
Because, yeah, that would be like an unnoticed public hearing.
Right, right, we're absolutely told, you cannot talk about it at the deliver the session.
Justin, cards, everyone you know to vote yes. Okay.
All right.
What's that?
October minutes, they were very short. Nice job, though.
You did a good job.
Very concise, though.
I think I made a motion to fire Sue and I, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
She said you know.
Josh, she's waiting for an out like that, she's waiting for an out like that.
No, this is great to have this done in November and October, it's, my music coming in, I went a couple times and it's a public hearing.
Yeah, sometimes you end up doing two meetings in January and that just sucks. It sucks.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll bear.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion to adjourn.
All right.
Nice.
I'll have him there first.
I notice usually at this time, you're gonna get your cookies or something.
We're talking.
Nobody or other thinks we don't have a.
Like twelve, like big, mad.
Sending, sending to my, my business unit, it's MCS.
Needs a warrant, yeah.
Act totally separate.
I know.
Enterprises, S U N. They're probably all. That, that. That's my. Enterprise.
So.
Yeah. It's what? Oh, yeah.
It's currently being.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It might, it might be.
There's still.
And it's. There isn't any. We've never had, we've invited. We first never have, we keep writing, they're like, well, I have to stop it.
Well, you're gonna have to die.
Exactly, one, that's what I used to say, I'm gonna get the major one, now I'm at thirty, and I don't need her.
So you kind of.
Oh, the secret. I get attached.
Okay, good. So that's, we're gonna do another one in February, we're gonna ramp up to maybe the April one, so just basically one and all, but you don't have to, but, this doesn't involve by any, it's gonna be, the next one is gonna be February, I believe.
You shut the sound?
It's just, you know.
Oh, yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it. Uh, yeah, just, yeah, just notify me, usually, you know, if I have time, I can do it, I'll do it.
Okay.
I need to open that April one.
Yeah, I'll find out as soon as.